So we will call the, our virtual meeting here to order. The first hearing we have is the 7:00 PM hearing. It's a request for a finding by Mr. Peter Prokosa, 102 Bay Road to rebuild an existing garage which doesn't meet the required zoning property setbacks. Mr. Prokosa, I see you're online. Would you like to tell us what you'd like to do here?
Yes, so I told the prior building inspector that we would just like to build the garage two feet longer towards the front of the garage and eight inches wider towards the house. And the prior building inspector said, "We have to do this, it shouldn't be a problem." The front of the garage extending two feet further towards the road is still within eight feet from the front of the house.
What's the current status of the garage?
It's old and kind of, kind of rotted out on one side. It's kind of more like a shed. And so the garage we would like to replace it from is costing $20,000. They're gonna go over that existing slab with four inches of concrete and rebuild a beautiful garage that's two feet longer and about a half a story higher. And it's gonna make the property look a lot better and the neighborhood nicer.
Someone wants to come on, Brian, or Andrew, I'm sorry.
So if I understand correctly, you're raising the existing structure and then putting a new structure on the existing pad, albeit extending and reporing a little bit on top?
Yes, right on the existing structure. And it's only two feet extended towards the front, towards the front of the house, which is still eight or 10 feet from the front of the house. The house at 102 Bay Road is way back from the street. It's probably 30, 40 feet from the back of the street off Bay Road. And it's eight inches wider, which will be eight inches wider towards our house, not towards our neighbor's house, Robin and Ann's house. I don't know their last name.
Are you?
It's gonna be a half inch, or I mean, it's gonna be a half story higher. So it'll have, it'll be a steep pitch and it'll be six feet from the top of the first floor to the ridge. So when you walk up there, you have to bend down. And it's just storage for the house because we don't have much storage and we don't have a basement. It's an old restored 1834 schoolhouse.
And who abuts you on the side that you're encroaching upon closer?
Robin and Ann is towards the side of the, Robin and Ann is towards the side of the garage. And they said there's no, they told us there's no problem with that. And then on the other side of the property is a yellow house. And that is Larry and Martha. I don't know their last names. We're selling, we're currently selling our house right now at 29 West Street in Hadley. And it's on the market now. When we sell that, we're going to actually move into the house ourselves. It's been a rental property for the last 30 years. We bought it about a year and a half ago.
When you say you bought it, you mean you bought Bay Road?
Yes.
And you're gonna move to Bay Road?
We bought Bay Road about a year and a half ago. And we're downsizing our house on the corner of Cemetery Road and West Street, 29th Street. It's on the market now. We're selling that. And I'm retired from the Air Force. My wife is retiring from the school system. And we plan on moving into that, like as soon as we fix the garage up and sell our house.
That being Bay Road, you're gonna move into Bay Road?
Yes.
I just want to be clear. Are you going to be destroying the current pad for the shed and rebuilding it or extending it?
Yes, so the current garage is gonna be taken down. We're building it with a company called, a company from West Springfield that builds these houses, these garages. It's, we're gonna take, have them remove it. It's gonna be extended two feet further in the front and eight inches wider towards the house. So it'll be eight inches wider and two inches, or I mean, two feet further in the front. If you look at the paperwork I submitted about two or three months ago from the, to the prior building inspector. And he said there shouldn't be a problem with that.
Okay, so, forgive me.
There, okay.
Okay, so you're only encroaching upon, you're, you're not encroaching upon the property line. You're extending eight inches towards the existing house, correct?
Yes, eight inches toward our house. And then towards our house and two feet further towards the front of the road, towards the road. And the garage is towards the back of the old schoolhouse, schoolhouse. So it's probably like, the garage is about, I don't know, 10 or 15 feet from the front of the house. So it's only coming two feet adjacent to the house. So it's only coming two feet further on the driveway.
Are you guys able to see my, my screen share?
Yeah.
Yes.
So Peter, are you, you're, you're moving two feet towards the front of the house and then you're moving eight inches to the left there? If I're looking at that, the way it's oriented on?
Exactly, eight inches towards the house. And then two feet towards the front of the garage.
And so the non, the non-conformity though, the existing non-conformity is it's too close on the right and on the back?
Yes, so we won't be going towards the back or to the right.
Is this encroaching at all on the frontage?
No.
Okay.
Well, you're extending the structure two feet towards the frontage, but not encroaching upon this?
Right, but not encroaching on the neighbors or towards, or the front of the house at all. The front of the house is about, about a good 10, 10 or 12 feet from the garage where it sits now.
Okay.
And the prior building inspector said, "Oh, that shouldn't be a problem." And we were gonna have this meeting done like two or three months ago. And then he extended it because he wanted, because he wanted to do like two of these at once, like a month later. And then, a month later, and then it was like the coronavirus thing going on.
Right.
I've got the information I need, Andrew.
Okay, and so then, and you're gonna add, so, so the, the overall change, just for my notes so I can write it up. The overall change is gonna be, the footprint is extending eight inches to the left, two feet to the, to the front. And, and then you're gonna be adding some height on it. You're adding a half a story on the top of it?
Exactly, exactly. Because the house has a tiny backyard. It has a nice decent front yard, but there's no basement. There's a crawl space. So we were hoping to add some storage to, to the garage. And it's gonna, it's gonna be, look nice. What's there now is just kind of just a shed.
So your reason for doing this is that it's no worse? It's not more detrimental? In fact, might be an improvement?
Oh, oh, without a doubt. It's gonna be 10 times better. It's gonna look nicer. It's gonna be more appealing. It's gonna be more useful. It's gonna be brand new. It's costing like $20,000. That, what's standing there now is like a shed. I mean, if either-
A one-car shed.
Yeah, it's a one-car shed. So if any of you drove by, you could see that. It's right around the corner from, from the town hall.
Are there, are there any, are there any neighbors or anyone on the call? I know, I see Brian Pearson joined. I'm not sure if you're here for this meeting or for one of the next ones. But is there, is there anyone else that wants to say anything about this application?
I'm here for another one.
Linda or Jason, you wanna make a, make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion to, what's the term? Grant a variance for the construction. A finding, excuse me. A finding to construct a new detached garage with the new footprint outlined in the description.
Linda, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're, you're all set.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
Enjoy your shed.
Oh, thank you. Take care.
Let's get, let's, we, let me, let me just call the meeting to order here. So it's 7:15 now. So we'll call our, our second, our second hearing here. It's a request for a variance by Mr. Alexi Levine, 37 Spruce Hill Road, to allow a newly built shed to remain within the allowed zoning property line setbacks. Mr. Levine, you wanna just tell us what you're here for, what you're, what you're looking for?
Yeah, we recently built a shed that was just under the requirements for a building permit, as far as the size. And we mistakenly built it to, a little too close because there's a 50-foot setback rule from the road. And a little too close to the side. I don't have a neighbor on that side. Like, it's an access road to Farm acreage. My contractor was thinking that the setbacks were the same as North Hampton. He's made a mistake. And it's kind of the only spot on the property where it could fit. It's a, the person who called in a complaint was, complained that we were building without a building permit. They didn't have any gripes about the location. The building inspector, it was his first day on the job. He came out and he said we were in violation of the setbacks. And he said, "We should apply for a variance." So here I am. I also want to say, I could, I'm not sure, but I could probably walk right out there with my computer and you could see it if you want me to. Aside from that application, I included some color photographs. I'm not sure if you can see them or?
It came out black and white and very, might as well not be able to see them.
So the front of the shed is behind three massive spruce trees that shield it from the road. It's about, I don't know, 10 feet behind those. And those are like 14 feet from the road. So it's 24 feet at its closest point to the road. It's parallel with the front of the house. So it seemed okay and it seems harmonious to fit in with everything architecturally to my untrained eyes and my contractor's untrained eyes, or he's trained probably. We painted it a nice dark green color to blend in. My house has no ba, I converted it to a two-family a couple of years ago when I bought it. And I live in the rear unit and there's no basement. So I was also looking for some storage. It's just a one-bedroom apartment back here where I live now. So I was just hoping to get some storage. And also I started a little mini orchard in my backyard. And I was, you know, it's nice to have a garden shed for that stuff. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have or attempt to take a walk out there if you want me to.
You said you built it, it was not there before?
Correct.
Correct. And, and you, and it's 24 feet?
From the-
From the front?
Yep, and it's behind a line of huge trees.
Spruce, Spruce Hill, Linda, is like, it goes from Route 9 over to Farm Lane? You know, go like across from, like near like the barbecue place on Route 9 and like the, the old like Kung Fu studio?
Oh, okay, I know where that is. Thanks.
Family practice. I will say, I actually rode my bike by there the other day. And I said, "Wow, what a beautiful shed." I wanted to do the design. It looks really great. So I do support it.
Thank you. I spared no expense.
How much is it within the offsets? Like how much is it encroaching upon those?
I'm sorry, what's an offset?
Or how, how close is it to the adjacent property line that the issue is?
I think it's about 10 to 12 feet.
So it's too close to the road and too close to the side, yep, the side lot, the house on the side?
Yes, there's no house on the side. It's just an access road.
The property, so it's the property line?
Yeah.
And the, Andrew or Linda, remind me again, the offset from the road is 50 feet?
Yes.
Supposed to be 50 feet on the-
And 15 from-
And 15, I think, from the side?
Yeah.
I can't tell from the map. There's one of the, one of the drawings that you provided that has lots of letters and arrows. And Andrew, can you go to that? It's down a couple pages. Yeah, that one. It lists septic tank. And then it lists another old septic tank and then a couple of leach fields. And my concern is that the shed may be too close to the actual septic tank, whichever one it is.
So I went out there with a shovel and I found a tank, the closest tank to the shed. I don't know which one of these it is. I think it's the, not the leach field one, but the smaller one, judging by the location, if that's accurate. And that is six feet from the shed.
Okay. I'm not sure the requirements for that. It seems awfully close.
Um, I don't, I'm not familiar off the top of my head, but I mean, my septic tank is pretty close out the front of my house. I don't think, I think-
But in terms of, Jason, I don't know, you might know this just from your professional job. If this, he didn't need a building permit based on the side of, size of this. So how, how would you know whether you're building on a, is there a rule against building too close to a septic tank?
Not that I'm familiar with, no.
Because he didn't, he wouldn't have need, there would be nowhere in the process to ever like flag-
Find, even find it, yeah. I know. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the offsets from septic tanks. But I mean, I mean, is it, is it a dormant septic? Is it not being used? Is it just disconnected in, in the ground or what?
I believe it is active. I, I am on a septic system. I'm, we don't have a sewer on our road.
Yeah. So have you, have you had it pumped ever?
Uh, no, it had it, I just bought it two years ago and it had a Title V passed.
And they put it in for you in the same spot?
It's not a new tank.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it was installed in 1989. Judging by the, the same diagram we're looking at.
There are, Andrew and Jason, there are sections in the zoning bylaws about septic siting. But it doesn't really, I couldn't find anything about how close or how far it had to be from another structure.
That would, that would be about, that's, that's, that's about where you would put your septic system though, right?
For the house?
Well, that, that's like if you're building a septic system, there would be a rule about where, how close that could be to something else. But it doesn't, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm not sure. I just, I don't know-
Whenever, whenever you put in a septic tank anyway, it's designed by an engineer, especially with leach fields and such.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't know that it would be, I don't know that he's in violation of anything even because he didn't need a building permit. So it's, it's only an issue about the setback, the side and front setback because I don't think, I don't think that he, like, if, if he was, if your septic system was 50 feet off the road and 15 feet off the side lot and you wanted to build something that encroached on that, I, I don't see how that would be in violation of anything, would it?
Not that I can think of.
Seems to me that the building inspector would have said something.
He didn't need a building permit though.
Right, but then you said, Mr. Levine, that the building inspector came by and said you were in violation. But he didn't say anything about septic.
No, that's correct.
And it's just, the shed is just slab on grade, correct?
There's no slab. It's just sitting on, we used what's called diamond piers.
Yeah.
So we didn't want to disturb the tree roots.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you're not excavating down and, I mean, I can't see how, one, you would even, it's potential, it's possible you wouldn't even know the septic is there.
Yeah, that's true.
And it's not something that you would necessarily have to detail in a building permit either.
Okay, that sounds wonderful.
Oh, in, in this, in this picture here that, that we have of the property, the, the, the shed would be like off the front left corner of the house there in line with, in line with where the house is in line?
Correct.
Can you put your mouse over the house, Andrew, so I know which one I'm looking at?
This, this is the-
Okay, that's the house there, okay.
This, this whole thing, right?
Yes, it's lawn.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand now what I'm looking at.
So that, it's right here, Jason, would be where the-
Exactly.
Okay.
Can you see it from the road?
Uh, you can see it, but it's pretty sheltered behind, like I said, big trees. And it, it's not, it doesn't pop out. Most people probably wouldn't notice it.
I, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it. I, what's over on the right, uh, it doesn't probably matter. Uh, it's already built.
Mm-hmm.
There's no neighbor on that side, so you're not really encroaching it. I don't, I don't see it as a safety issue being too close to the road because the house, it's in line with the house. And all those houses are probably too close to the road on that, on that, on Spruce Hill there. They're all, they're all kind of in line. But it's not really out of, out of step with the general character of the neighborhood either in terms of like a safety issue and being on the, too close to the road on a corner or something like that. I don't know, I, you, you guys have any, any other, you have any other concerns?
No. If, Linda, if you don't have any questions or anything, I'd make a motion.
A motion is fine, with me.
Okay, then I make a motion to allow a newly built shed to, shed to remain as is, excuse me, as detailed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Very welcome. I wonder about that septic thing, like the, I don't see, I mean, like my septic's only like 10 feet out in front of my house. It's like literally right next to the sidewalk, I think. I don't know, that's what I want to look into.
How deep, how, I don't have a septic system. How deep is the septic, like how, how, how far under the surface?
Two feet.
So if you were building, like those piers probably go down three feet for like the frost or something, right?
They would go below four feet, yes, you would hit it. But I mean, like the only issue I could see of, like if you wanted, like crazily, if you wanted to build over a septic would be building over a leach field. That would probably be a big no-no.
Yeah, leach field's a problem because even driving over it can-
Yes, yeah, because it's all engineered sand and layers and everything.
I, I just like kind of thought that, like, yeah, how, how would you, like, he wouldn't, I, I don't, I don't like see that you would ever be found to be like in violation of that based on what he said that he didn't need to get a permit, but so it's-
No, especially with no excavation. You know, it's not like you'd be potentially disturbing any lines or sand that might be put around the septic.
Might not be in violation, but it might be a problem if he doesn't pump his tank.
Well, if you can't get the lid off, yeah.
I remember he, I remember he came before us. I recognize that name.
Wasn't he the gentleman that was trying to buy the North Hadley recreational hall or fire department?
Oh, was he?
I think that's him, wasn't it?
I don't know.
Or who was, who was lined up to purchase it at that time?
Yeah, he said he had a two-family home too. So I think he came to get a special permit for the two-family home.
That's right. I'm just looking at the mass builders. See if I can find offsets for septics.
It's, it's mentioned somewhere in the zoning bylaws under site plans. But I couldn't see that it had any particular application to his, to his request. But it looked like he had more than one septic there, an old one and a new one on that drawing. I couldn't really tell.
To be honest, until Andrew pointed out the house, I didn't know what I was looking at. All I, all I saw were the septic tanks drawn. I didn't realize that that long structure was the house.
We have to wait till exactly 7:30, Mr. Pearson.
Okay, it just clicked over on my computer.
Okay, me too. All right, so we, I'll call the, the third hearing here. It's a request for a variance by Sierra Bertai, 12 Breckenridge Road to raise and house chickens within the residential district. Mr. Pearson is here on, on Sierra Bertai's behalf and he's gonna present her application.
I am in charge of the chickens. So, yes, we're zoned residential. It's kind of strange because the, we're on Breckenridge Road, which is right off of Mount Warner. And the, I guess it's kind of the north side of the road is zoned agricultural and we're zoned residential only on this side of the road. So we would like a variance for raising chickens. We plan to have, right now, we're planning to have eight chickens. We may expand our flock to ultimately 15 chickens in a coop. No roosters are planned.
Does anyone else have chickens around there?
Uh, there's a guy at the top of the road, right? You know, where the entrance to Carl's excavating. There's a house there with a wooden fence. And he has chickens like free range there. And then a little, it's actually Mount Warner, like, it's probably 300 or 400 yards before you get to North Maple. There's a house that has some goats. And that side might be agricultural because that, the guy that does all the squash has his farm over there. So maybe Mount Warner's agricultural. But they just did a variance for Phil Shumway. We bordered with him on the south side of our property. And he got a variance for horses. And he's built the barn. And so our, one of our bordering properties has horses on it, so.
I remember that case, he brought it to the board.
It was like a year ago or something, maybe a little more.
You're part of that one, Jason?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I don't know, just, it's a weird one. It's a weird issue here because most of the town is agricultural residential. And there's this one part of the town that's zoned residential because of sort of a relic of how they thought that they were gonna zone back in like the 70s, I guess. So you end up with this weird thing where these houses aren't any closer than anyone, any, they're not any closer on top of each other than anything else. And there's a weird zoning quirk that the houses on one side of the road are agricultural residential and houses on the other are residential. And they're all really identical.
Pretty much.
Which is why we, what we were dealing with, with the horse situation, that people had a hor, people had horses across the street from there at one point. And that guy had a bunch of property and he couldn't have horses by rule.
Yeah, and it's funny, this side of the road is probably less dense than the other side of the road that's agricultural. Because there's like frallow is there and that, you know, we're on like point, we're almost point nine acres. So we have a pretty good sized lot.
Yeah.
I was looking-
Go ahead, buddy.
Go ahead. I was looking in the zoning bylaws before we started. And I found something interesting. I hadn't known was there. But on, under residential use regulations, it allows, it specifies permitted use. And it includes 3.1.1.5. It includes agriculture, horticulture and floriculture uses. That surprised me, but it is there.
Under residential?
It's on page, CB.5. Well, there's no page number, but-
Yeah, I got you.
It's 3, 3.1 residential districts, 3.1.1.5. It's three, three point one residential districts, three point one point one point fives.
Did some, did anybody tell you that you couldn't have the chickens, did the building inspector say, the zoning enforcement officer say you couldn't have the chickens?
No, I, I reached out to, uh, uh, the new guy, uh, Scott, is it, I don't remember his name. Who, who, like, um, I, I reached out to the building inspector and he said, Quinlin. And he said, uh, you know, go through this process, I have no problem with it, I reached out to the health inspector. I have an email from them, they have no problem with it, and, you know, I did the, um, butters list and sent it all out, and, you know, a few of our neighbors who we're friends with were like, let us know if you need support or whatever, nobody, nobody opposed it that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
That's it, that's interesting, I think, I think Linda's probably, I think Linda's probably right there, I, I think the, one of the reasons that the horse one was different is because horses are kind of a, um, like a weird, they're a weird like pet slash like livestock thing, and I think we, I think we were thinking that that didn't fall under agriculture, but chickens might feel a bit more like agriculture than having like a pet horse. But, uh.
Are you planning on having any fencing, I know you mentioned a coop, are you gonna keep them restrained to the property, or are you letting them kind of free-range?
We're gonna build a coop, uh, um, to house them, and then it'll have a fenced yard to protect them from, there are foxes around here, so, for security, but, um, if we're around, we'll probably just free-range them and keep an eye on them, you know, if we're, we, you know, I'd work from home and look out the window and see the backyard, so.
I know they don't go too far, but on an acre, they could wander a bit.
Right, right, um.
Coyotes up on Mount Warner, you know.
Oh, yeah, we hear them, they, they do a lot of howling, um, yeah, so we have, actually, we have an old she- I think it's a sheep fence from the forties or something that goes up one side of our property, and then Phil on the backside said, feel free to let him roam, and then Andrew and Courtney on the other side, they were, you know, fine with it too, so, we're pretty close with our neighbors and stuff, uh, so, shouldn't be an issue, but just to answer your question, you know, we'll have them basically, um, guarded, you know, at night and stuff, and, and enclosed a hundred percent, and then probably free-range them when we're around.
Okay.
And so you, you, um, the back of your property there where the coop is gonna be, butts up to that, that land that we were dealing with, with, uh, with Phil?
Yes, we're on the, we, we're, we butt up to the two acres that were put into, um, restriction. He can't build on it, so it's actually kind of nice for us, it's, I don't know what you call it, conservation easement or something, but, um, so we're, we're kind of butted up the backside of his property.
You know, you probably need a permit for that coop.
Uh, well, it's, uh, four by eight, is my, uh, sketch. Uh, I wouldn't call it a dr- a, a real plan, but, um, and I, you know, I know, I'm clear, like, it has to be fifteen feet back, right? From my neighbor.
Yes.
That's my, that's my plan, but, you know, no, no, uh, septic or running water or electric or anything like that. Just the basic.
Um, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure that, uh, a variance was technically required here, but I don't see any problem with it. It's kind of something to the horse situation, um, might be a different situation if a bunch of neighbors were complaining about it, but nobody has, uh, showed up to contest it either. So, uh, I, I don't, uh, I don't have a problem with it. Um, you think fifteen, is fifteen chickens the, the most you would ever really wanna have? Cause I think we probably should put, like, you know, a number on the variance.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I don't think it would go above that, yeah.
Um.
We should probably stipulate.
Yeah, so just, you know, we should put something on there, just so that we don't end up with a commercial chicken farm there after you sell the property someday. You sell to the Purdue's, and then, and then the neighbors are.
Stop it at a thousand, and I will. Max, one thousand chickens, no, I, yeah, I, I probably wouldn't go over a thousand.
Do you agree to fifteen?
Alright, let's stop at fifteen.
You want a motion, Andrew?
Yeah, that makes, it makes sense to me.
I move that we grant the variance for having chickens on Breckenridge Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thanks, everyone, have a good.
You too.
Stay safe.
You too.
Is that it for the agenda tonight, or we have one more?
That's it, I don't know who, I'm not sure, someone, Valerie Hood popped on there, which was actually another person that had already been before the board, but I don't know, she left.
Might have just been looking.
Yeah, she disappeared.
Well, let's wrap it up.
I think that's it then, so, uh.
The only thing, I'm, I'm, only thing I'm concerned about to tell Jennifer or somebody is that we really didn't get any people coming on butters.
No.
You know, people protesting, and that might be okay, or it might be not okay.
Well, as long as the notice is legal in the paper, I mean, that's up to, that's people's own prerogative to come in if they so wish. Um, I mean, everything seemed to be up to snuff so far on that, so. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd hope if they felt strong enough, they would have logged in to do it. Yeah, I'm good.
Me too.
Okay, then, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, we'll close the meeting, and, uh, until next time, hopefully we'll be in, uh, person at some point again.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice, alright, have a good night.
Okay, bye guys.
Keep safe.